Yes, I see them by two. Doug, are you ready? Anybody's in the room?
Nobody on yet.
Okay, good. Good evening. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. The first meeting of February for the Long Island City Council. And the first item on the agenda is are there any additions to the agenda? Or otherwise, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Scott Stephanie Kishna. Motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications, first part here, as I was going to do a couple of introductions here. Following up from an email from last June, I guess it was, about a topic that was a concern of citizens. And I thought I'd invite the old comment section of the meeting, Gretchen Ray Robinson and also Karen Mills. Oh, there she is, okay. To talk about a topic and then we'll get Joe on right after that. So it's now open communications time. And if you want to be on, sir.
I'm fine. Look like this.
Can I get you to push the top button on the microphone? And it will turn green.
I'm going to actually move it a little further away.
It'll press slide down.
Before I do that.
Here you go, perfect.
All right. Tom asked me to come in and speak. Last summer, we decided to do a No Mow May. Part of that was that we were gone for May. But also, I, you know, made arrangements with the young man that was going to be mowing my lawn to not mow in May. And unfortunately, we got a notification that someone did not appreciate that. But I'd like to ask that the council consider allowing for citizens to participate in a No Mow May. I think that we're proud here in Mount Vernon that we're a tree city. And I certainly think that a lot of people in town have strong desires to do things in more environmentally friendly ways. And ultimately, there's an organization called Be City USA. We could potentially move toward doing that sort of thing.
We are.
We are. We are.
Well, then let's do better. And allow those early season plants to flower and be good sources of pollination for the pollinators, birds and bees and so on, and shelter for insects that use those habitats. You know, if we allow grass to go un-mown for just a month of May, we can create better habitats and forage for early season pollinators. We'll spend less money, time and energy in May. I did not find statistics for similar sized Midwest towns, but the city of LA, LA Basin, they believe that they are releasing 22 tons of air pollution a day due to mowing and related activities. And so, you know, a single household's contribution to that can be significant. And to have that option be protected by the city certainly would be good for the environment as well. The other thing that I know has been talked about and that I see, and you know, I am interested in better biodiversity and environmental causes, is the fact that traditional lawns are such a monoculture and really are not terribly helpful to a lot of the animals that live in our yards and neighborhoods. And so, we should move toward a proposal that would make its city policy to not enforce any mowing mandates until after the first weekend in June, so that people who want to participate in No Mow May would then have all weekends too, if they want to mow. Which is what I'd ask them. Thank you very much.
Karen, I should ask you to state your name and address first.
My name is Karen Mills and my address is 502 A Avenue Southeast. And here are my numbers.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just going to read.
Gretchen, keep pushing the button.
Yeah, I took it off.
Top button.
Top button.
Thank you.
I'm Gretchen Ray Robinson. I live at 218 First Avenue Northeast on the Highway 1. We didn't participate in No Mow May, but I would be willing to work on my husband and see if he would. But, so, I'm just going to read what I wrote. So my interest in No Mow May is tied to educating our community about alternative ways to promote and reward all of us for contributing to sustainability, which involves making changes to the way we do things. Last year or the year before, I communicated with Chris Mosfisch about the request for action regarding lawn care services that use pesticides and pesticides. And I learned that due to state control over agriculture issues, which includes lawn care services, a local community does not have the will to ask or coordinate lawn care companies to publicly share their ingredients with us. I believe that's how it worked out. Correct me if I'm wrong. Proprietary issues are also involved. So of course, I disagree with the state's control of local communities in this case. No Mow May is a way to do something that rethinks what is good for our lawns, such as promoting pollination. We didn't participate in No Mow May last year, but we've never used pesticides or pesticides products on our lawns, ever. It's a pleasure to see birds eating plugs or worms strolling their grass. And then their poo, bird poo, transfers seeds to other places and contributes to the ecosystem. And of course, we see bees at work. So it's, we love that kind of view. Finally, if people were made aware of lawn care products' ingredients, they could decide for themselves. I believe people would make better choices if they knew more about alternative ways to care for their lawns. As a dog walker, every spring and fall, lawn care products are an unwonted challenge for the dogs and myself. And they take away from the joy of walking. No Mow May will challenge perceptions and hopefully in a good way. Sustainability depends on us to make better choices. Thank you.
Gretchen. Any questions, all speakers? It has been brought up to the Sustainability Committee as well and trying to get ahead of this, offer this opportunity in the open comment section of this meeting. And the council wants to go forward with that. We've been talking to the City Council and the municipal generalists. We have all the agenda, it's all in the book there. Also, this area of Communications, we have Joe.
All right. Mr. Ray, council owners, thanks for having me. I'm Joe Verini. I'm the Communications Director for the Cedar Rapids, Lynn County Solid Waste Agency. Been just over a year since I was here last. I wanted to come and give you an update on services programs, talk about our tipping fee changes coming up here for FY '24, and then talk to you about Forward 2044 as our planning process for what we're going to do when our current location closes in 2044. So real quick, to brief history of the agency, we formed back in 1994. That's when the city of Cedar Rapids and Lynn County combined under a 2080 organization. So we're not the city, we're not the county. We're a standalone agency. We're always special as the stepchild of Lynn County. So to try to do what we do out there. We have our two locations. Site two is our landfill and resource recovery building out on County Home Road. Site one is on Mount Trashmore, the closed landfill. That's now walking trails. And then Site three is the compost facility that's adjacent to Mount Trashmore down in Cedar Rapids. So I'll start off with the changes coming up here in FY '24. Our tipping fee, the garbage disposal fee, is going to go up to $45 per ton. Currently, it is $42. This is going to be that $3 increase. Will go into effect on July 1st, 2023. And then we will have changes for our flat fees too. So if you come in a car, it's going to be a $12 flat fee. So if you come out there with just one bag of garbage in the car, it's $12. If you come out in an SUV or minivan, it'll be a $15 flat fee per load. And then pick up some full-size vans are $22 per load. And so I always like to remind folks that it's often a lot cheaper if you use your curbside services before coming out to us. You would be surprised at the amount of people that just come out with one or two bags of garbage. You know, it's Saturday, they're like, yeah, let's go out and go to the dump, you know, make it a day. So we always tell them, save your money. You know, unless you have 10 bags of garbage, in most cases, it's not going to be cost effective for you because everybody's coming out in pickup trucks. So use your curbside services as you can, you know, save your gas, save your time and save the money. And then also, the next page there, our yard waste disposal fees are going to be going up. It's going to go to $28 per ton, up from the current 26. That's also on July 1st. The minimum fee will be $10 per load. I know a lot of our communities here in Lynn County have their own yard waste drop offs, so I encourage folks to use those if they have them. And then our commercial recycling fee, if you're, I know you guys use Republics, they're probably taking the direct feedback to the facility. But for the city of Marion and the other haulers that bring it directly to us, the commercial recycling fee is going up to $90 per ton. That's up from the current 85. We charge $106 per ton when we take it to Republics. So the fee that we charge helps kind of pay for that operation. But for recycling, for the residents that do come in, most of our services are staying unchanged. So there's going to be no charge to bring in plastic, paper, cardboard. We're seeing so much cardboard right now, especially, you know, COVID hit three years ago. Just since then, if you ever come through, just our area that we have just for cardboard is always full. We actually just got our first cardboard baler so we can process more through and get it done more quickly. So that is still no charge for residents. Fee for appliances, staying the same, it's $10 per appliance. Scrap metal, there's no charge. Tires, staying the same, $3 per tire, up to eight. If you have more than eight and we weigh the load, it's 15 cents per pound. And then that works out to about $3 for every size car tire. And then batteries and medical sharps, we're still continuing to take those. No charge from residents. Other services inside the Resource Recovery Building, TVs and monitors, staying the same. It's $15 per unit. And that's every unit regardless of size of weight. So if you have a little old black and white TV, the big giant, you know, 36-inch Sony big box TVs, which we still get in every week, it's crazy. It's $15 per unit. All the electronics, no charge. So old VCRs, DVD players, things like that, even vacuum cleaners. Basically, if you can plug it in, and it's not an appliance, we'll take it for no charge. And then, let's see, household accessories materials, this is another one of our private programs. This is going to remain no charge for Lynn County residents. So paints, chemicals, stains, cleaners, we'll take those for no charge anytime we're open. And those people can drop those off Monday through Friday, 7 to 4. And then on Saturday, it's by appointment. And we try, we do that just so the traffic doesn't get backed on County Home Road. It used to be everybody came right at the end of the day. It was a big mess, especially with the ball field across from us now. So now it's the appointments. Every 15 minutes, a new batch comes in. So it just kind of keeps flowing throughout the morning. So that's been working pretty good. Education and outreach, in addition to me coming out, talking to the city councils across Lynn County, we also have a licensed teacher on staff. He works with everybody from preschool kids up to college students. I mean, we've worked with Cornell students in the past in different projects. Tours have picked up again after a couple of two-year hiatus because of COVID. So we're having lots of groups coming out, seeing that. So if you ever, if anyone wants to tour either our landfill or the compost location, give us a call. We can take care of that. We get groups of all sizes. Moving down to Mount Trashmore, that will open later this spring. It's really, we always say, as soon as we can. It's really weather dependent. Those trails are really soft coming out of winter. So we've got to make sure that they're hard enough. But we do have our main trail that's gravel. So once that opens, we get people up as soon as we can. The walking trail and the bicycle trail, just they might need an extra month for the sun to get on there for a little bit. But that's been a huge success. We've done the Mount Trashmore Challenge the last couple of years with the Newbo Main Street District. For the folks, they, whoever goes up and down it the equivalent amount of times, it's 147 times up and down. That's the equivalent of scaling Mount Everest. So they, I think the last two years, it's gone up like, the first year, I think they had about 26. And this last year was about 40 people that actually competed it. So that's been pretty cool. So you can look for that, sign up. We'll put it on our Facebook page and website when we get closer to that. Moving over to the compost facility, if you really want to go crazy with No Mow May, I suggest come down and get some of our compost. Grab a material. We give it away for no charge to Lynn County residents. If you come in your personal vehicle, no limit to how much you take. So if you have a trailer, we will load the trailer and you can take it. We do charge commercial interest because otherwise, we actually had a promotion for the month of October, free for everybody. So contractors, out of county, a lot of Johnson County residents come up and get it. Free for everybody. We had landscapers come in with semis loading up. So we just find the people who use it and like it, it's great stuff. So come and take that facility right now. It's only open Monday through Friday. Come spring, it'll be open on Saturdays again too. And then wood chips, we used to charge for wood chips. And then we had the Durachio. Now we have a little, too much of a bucket. Our wood chips are great.
Charging wood chips at that point.
And then I still always like, you know, you go to like Home Depot or Lowe's, you get a bag, it's like four or $5 for a bag. And so what we were charging, it was the equivalent of like 38 cents per bag. Well, now there's no charge. So please come help yourself. We need to get rid of those wood chips. Great stuff. And like, if the city ever needs either compost or wood chips for any projects, let us know, we'll make arrangements and no charge.
Big guy.
Moving on to the landfill future. Basically, we know that we're going to close at our current location. June 30th, 2044 is the date that we have to close, even if we still have space there because of our settlement agreement with the city of Marion. However, where we currently stand, we will be full, well, before then. Only right now, we have 15 years of capacity left. The Durachio took about two years of space out. And we're just getting more and more garbage coming in. So we're planning for the future. We're calling that process the Forward 2044. Because we know that, you know, yeah, we're going to close June 30th, 2044. We know that July 1st, 2044, there's still going to be 600 to 700 tons at least of garbage that has to go somewhere. So the board, going through the planning process, looking at different partnerships. We know that there's things that we need to be doing right now so that we can even get to 2044, so we don't fill up. And right now, it looks like we're going to be full in 2036. But that's because we're actually in our new area of our landfill. If anyone's ever been out there, we're in our new cell, what we call, so we're at the very bottom of it. And right now, it's, we're putting, you start with the base layer at four feet of municipal solid waste. So that's city of Cedar Rapids garbage, city of Marion, and then the stuff that gets picked up here in Mount Vernon, the other communities. We put that down first for about four or five feet. So once we've had that established, which we do now, now we can put the construction and demolition debris on top of it. And so as that gets pressed down, we'll be more capacity. That's probably going to push us back up to about 2038. So we have six years that we need to get back before we close so that we don't run out of space too early. So things that we're looking at so we can help preserve that space is looking at partnerships for more organics management. We did a part of a study this summer. Iowa Department of Natural Resources went to 11 landfills across Iowa and they separated it out into categories. What's getting thrown away, actually, they separated into 80 different categories. So they actually would take representative samples from every landfill, hold aside, and they had people going through every bag of garbage, putting it into these different categories. And it's pretty consistent across the state. You know, we were involved with the second biggest landfill, Metro in Des Moines, which is the biggest, Dubuque, Iowa City, and then some smaller ones in western and south central Iowa. And it was really, it's pretty amazing how the numbers shake out from big city to small city. But organic waste, food waste, is one of the biggest. It's 20, you know where to go, 20, 25% of all the garbage in Iowa is organic waste. So we've been talking with Johnson County, looking if there's some way that we can partner to figure out if we can divert more than what we currently do with food waste being the biggest one. There's some issues there with a lot of it, especially, you know, there's what? People are throwing away their homes within the big generators with all the industry we have here. A lot of them, you know, they have to throw that food waste away, but it's packaged. And we can't take the packaging in the composting operation. So how to get that depackaged adds cost to it. So these are the things that we're going to try to figure out. Because if we can get that out of the waste stream, that's going to save a lot of space, not just for us, but for landfills across the state. Looking at different funding opportunities for grant programs, things, especially C and D. What's interesting about the garbage here in Lynn County, I think I mentioned this in years past, but only 25% of the waste that we have coming in, so that 600 tons we get each day, 25% of that is municipal solid waste. So that's the garbage from city of Mount Vernon, city of Cedar Rapids, city of Marion, and the rest of our communities. The other 75%, the majority of what we get is all commercial industrial waste. And so that pays for all the programs that we have, that we support. So we're trying to figure out how do we keep meeting the needs of our industry that raises the majority of the garbage to us? So we can keep having these recycling programs that our residents and the communities are using. So that's one of the struggles that we're working through right now. So looking at different ideas, things that we can do right now to save space and then plan for the future for after 2044. But the big news is, on the second last slide there, there is going to be no new landfill in Lynn County. That is one thing our board has decided last year. They said they're not going to pursue siting any landfill. I'm sure some of you remember the last time they went through siting a landfill in the early 2000s. Very contentious issue, you know, we all create garbage. Nobody wants a landfill near them. So there's actually so many zoning restrictions in place in Lynn County now. We can't site an apples-to-apples landfill to what we have. There's just no available parcels left anywhere else. And talking to our neighboring counties, nobody wants to take all their garbage either. No surprise. But we're looking for partnerships, different ways, if there's statewide relationships that we can make. Because no matter what we end up doing, landfills will be a component of it. I mean, we could even build a state-of-the-art incinerator, which is one of the options we looked at. And you know how much it would cost to build an incinerator to handle our garbage? A billion dollars. One billion dollars. We would actually have to import garbage in to make it work because we don't have enough here in Lynn County. Because you have to operate a 20 borgs of it just to make it work. So no matter what we do, even with increased organics diversion, any alternative technology, landfills will still be a part of it because there's always going to be a residue leftover, things that you can't compost or recycle or reuse. But that landfill is just not going to be up in the county. So transfer will probably be an option down the road, no matter what. So that will mean the garbage will still come in to a place like County Home Road, our facility on the southwest side of Cedar Rapids where a lot of the industry is. But then instead of being buried, you can put either on the rail cars or in the semis and then take it to a landfill that will accept it. So that's something that could happen. And if we fill up before 2044, that's what will happen off that location. We have a big building there with 44,000 square feet of resource recovery building. If you keep having it for recycling, the other half can be part of the transfer station. So that's on the table as well. But in the meantime, we're still there. We're still here to meet the needs of the community. So for recycling, whatever else that we can do, if it's writing education or compost, let us know. We're going to keep doing it and hopefully be doing it beyond 2044.
Thank you, Joe. Questions in this area?
You covered your speech there.
You know, it's funny, I go to all 170 communities, you're my first one. So I've got two more this week and then four next week.
Yeah, nice job.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Some people will pay for it because they'll have a billion dollar incinerator. Incinerator maybe, or so. Anything else in the public communications for the meeting? We guess.
Mark Andrews, 718-790 Northwest. I was thinking about something for the past while. It kind of would involve, it's a lot of different groups out here. Just walk everybody here, maybe in the lines. So just thinking about like electronic or electric vehicles. So Mount Vernon is one of the few places that actually, if you look on that, has something in our area until you get up to Cedar Rapids, Marion. You've got one of the best farms, that's a couple here. So in the future, you know, since we're doing wayfinding things and we're looking at how to do downtown, we've got our two spots here. I'm not sure what you guys are thinking for the future, can add more down the road that I think to think about? Because then I could go into a wayfinding signage, perhaps add that on to it. Perhaps a different way to attract businesses as well. But I think it's kind of, kind of made a thing about that sooner than later. You know, get CDG involved. Sustainability may probably help us with, you know, their ideas too. Just putting that in your ear. That's it.
Thank you. Along that line, Cornell did put two charging stations at the Saw, at the Forest Athletic Facility. And at the Lee's Breakfast on last Thursday morning, their big, Lynch Ford mentioned that they are getting into electronic, electric vehicles big time. They're actually going to build a separate building, is what I understood, at the Lynch complex, to deal with maintenance of electric vehicles. And they're putting in some charging stations up there as well. I didn't hear a number.
I've got a story on this week's sun, so.
Okay, let's all lose. What's going on? My favorite. Remind me, man, there is one, there must not be one at the Bureau Center.
There's not one at the LBC. We do have an abundance of solar panels.
Are they working?
They're not currently working.
I'm just curious to know, sustainability committee looking at like how much they're actually going to use? Is there any way to?
I don't know about that question, but the last meeting, I presented the fact Cornell had theirs, their two going. And then just a couple days ago, I found out about the ones that they go with at Lynch. But one of the things I was going to do for the next meeting was to talk to Matt Snyder's and Danny Pedrick to see about if they would dedicate a spot to their locations for a charging station. And talk about who's going to finance that. But Cornell is, they just tapped their credit card. And I think the days of just having a free wall here, the expectation is by the marketplace is that you tap the credit card and go in. Mark, do you know how much these cost? Put it in.
I looked it up, but I can't remember. They're, like, it just depends on the level. I think level two is $10,000.
$10,000.
I think so, yeah.
I know, I talked to a friend who has an E car. And he says to charge it at home 100% is nine hours. But to charge it in a level one or a fast would be like 45 minutes.
Yeah, level two and level three. Level three is the fastest.
But he said, you know, he could charge it at home for an hour and it'd take him 100 miles. Anyway, I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's like the level two is kind of where you want to be at, like when you're shopping around and things like that.
There's some kind of meter on that council?
And we got a grant for those two.
Actually, we don't.
They were, oh, I.
Kerry Scott.
No, and they're not metered. Although it might be an alternative. The question will be, do they actually make pedestals? I would tell you that because we keep a closer eye on here at City Hall, that fairly consistent, you know, about four or five people that use them. But.
Well, it is something to be out in front of versus being toward reactionary of, as I agree, will be expected. More coming, checking a couple sources, a couple other locations. Get permission to install, kind of arrange the finances again. Get the Sarah everything in Communications, consent agenda. We have two items in council meeting, events and licenses. Questions on those or?
I move approval of the consent agenda is presented.
The hall.
I'll second that.
Great.
Moving secondly to approve the consent agenda. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Starting a series of public hearings here. First one, public hearing for the approval of the fiscal year 2023, 2024, maximum property tax dollars for the city of Mount Vernon. I want to officially open the public hearing and see if there's anybody here to speak to that topic. And we don't have anybody on line that's to that topic. Okay. I'm going to officially close the public hearing then, if that's okay. Do we need a motion for that? Okay. Close the public hearing, proceed to G1. Resolution to approve the fiscal year maximum property tax dollars. Any explanation you want to add? Chris?
No, we continue to monitor Senate 512 on. It's actually going to be discussed in the committee today at House. That has possible implications in that. I just corrected my mistake, should be on rollback, which is fine, except we've already started this process of starting a public hearing, so.
Processed the state mandates, correct?
Correct. As far as the max property tax dollars go, our annual percentage increase was 3.91%. If you look at our overall taxable increase, it actually went down by 700,000. The basis for that is the change in state rollback, once again, where they credit the commercial entities. Their first $150,000 in value is actually rolled back somewhere to present budget. So that, you could see that significantly. Hence, the property tax increase. So overall, we're at about $70,000 in tax dollars this year, which in the interest of the citizens, not very much. We're going to continue on. They might extend the levy certification to April 30th. They might backfill those dollars. They might backfill those dollars, we're not sure. There's a lot on the table quite yet. House and Senate will be together and discuss how they want to proceed. But as of right now, we need to proceed in order to meet current deadlines.
Although we want to raise off that $12.99, the 16 pennies that we're asking for rendition is a wise decision to make this night. Got a resolution on the floor here. Are there any questions? We'll roll call votes.
I'll move approval of resolution 2-6-2023A, approving the fiscal year 2023-2024 maximum property tax dollars.
Second?
I'll second.
Second? No further questions, no further comments from Chris? Ready for roll call votes?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes, it's a reason.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Deb. Moving back to E2, public hearing to adopt plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate the cost for the Palisades Road Olay project. Officially open public meeting, and see if there's anybody here to speak to that topic. Hearing done, we will move on to oppose the public hearing, move to item G2, resolution for approval, adopting the plan, specifications, et cetera, for the Palisades Road Olay project. Further comments regarding that, Chris?
No, the engineer's estimate for the project is $290,049. So we'll see who the difference come in. Close to that, that will be a good data as opposed to the next project.
It's 10th Avenue until 17th, or how far?
All the way up.
All the way up the hill?
This is, for the most part, the sewage asphalt over there, so it's a grind, so it'll, it'll sublease it. We're well aware of the drainage issues, but the cost to pour that out, rock it, put the concrete tree back in, more than we need right now, for that part.
We're on G2, resolution for approval to the public hearing date. Is there a motion to that effect? I would move to approve resolution 2-6-2023B, adopting plans for the Palisades Road Olay project. Is there a second?
Second?
Roll call. Moving second to move forward on this resolution, to roll call vote, please.
Herman? Tyler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Back to E3, public hearing to adopt plans, specifications, formal contract, estimate the cost for the Davis Park improvement project. Officially open the public hearing on that project. One thing I don't recall, but is that this is scoreboard part of this Davis Park project? This scoreboard that's out there, 20 years has not worked, but then.
The high school is doing their old scoreboard too for Davis Park. So we'll have a new scoreboard, but it's not included in part of this yet.
Okay.
Because the city's been so supportive of their projects, they're gonna move that over and. We gotta trail them. We got these chairs.
Well, let's just say it's newer than our old scoreboard. We, we did come out ahead. But there will be a cost associated with the getting something.
That's not part of the scope. That's, that consolation of that scoreboard is not part of the scope.
It is not part of the project, that's correct.
So is this, sorry, is this the scoreboard that's down at the First Street Field right now?
The scoreboard that we have is currently at Davis. It's meeting up against.
No, I mean, you mean the city or the school?
No. No, it's the one that came from.
Came from Cornell, yeah.
Baseball field, part of baseball field.
Okay.
I think the South, so I guess I should call it point out, the high school point out, shared softball field.
Thanks for that explanation. The end of Congress is a public hearing. It was all, that was the close public hearing, proceed to G3, resolution to adopt plans, specs, formal contract, estimate the cost for the Davis Park improvement project. Is there a motion for the factoring of permits?
I just want to point out that this estimate is about $130,000 more than what we had planned for. So what we've done is taken a couple items, including the fencing, the backstop fencing, and put that as a bit of alternative. Not to say that you couldn't do a project of that size, but it will take from other projects that we're going down the avenue. So I think right now, we'll go ahead and take a wait and see.
Do you have some residents who are accepting bids, maybe when they come in and bring them in later, or right here, whatever.
In front of us is the resolution for approval.
Having said that, I would move approval of resolution 2-6-2023C, adopted plans, specs, formal contract, and estimate the cost for the Davis Park improvement construction project.
Matt, second?
Matt, second.
Moving second to pass resolution G3, ready to call a roll?
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Thank you, Deb. Motion carries. I guess it's through section E, nothing in section F. We're now to G4, resolution to approve the disposal of city-owned property, the four items.
These are actually an Eldon's report, report last week. I didn't catch them, so they were supposed to be in the resolution that were disposing a property, but I didn't list them. So in order to be safe, I thought we would just adopt another resolution.
Thanks for the pictures, Eldon, you're always helpful.
I probably would have blamed it, it's bigger than my house.
It makes me want to send them around to like buddies of mine, go, do we need this? Do we need a pump that we have? Like, there's no earthly reason why us residents should have one.
Derek wants one of those legs, so.
I will say that the flowers are actually pretty nice. They're just not conducive for the city work. The boss flowers are very, very nice for residential work, but not so much when you're bouncing around in a, in a, in a, in a, in a.
As we discussed, I think these are gonna be auctioned off, right?
These will probably be put on Gov. deals. Majority of the other items that were taken last week did get auctioned.
Sharpless?
Yeah, sharpless will clear it out, of course. These, because somebody might actually be like, run them, we'll put them on Gov. deals, so I see.
We've had pretty good luck doing that with other equipment in the past, so. Yeah. And the, these are smaller flowers for older pickups that we've had in the past. They're kind of, I don't wanna say that, they're, they're, they have an expiration date on them, and they don't fit on anything else that we have. We have newer, we have newer flowers that fit on the motor trucks, and, you know, a couple of pickup trucks, so. They're just, they're kind of outdated, and they still work, and they can still do some of these and do it.
I would move to approve resolution 2-6-2023D, approving the disposal of city-owned property. Greg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes, Deb. Moving second to move forward on the resolution 2-6-2023D, roll call vote again? Motion?
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And then motion carries. On G5, through the fiscal year 2022-2023 transfers.
Nothing too exciting. Think that these is essentially bank transfers from one account to another. These are all planned expenses, you just have to, you have to write it down.
Sing that on to a resolution 2-6-2023D, approving the fiscal year 22-2023 transfers.
Greg, is there a second?
Second?
I'll second.
Give that to Deb, or to, sorry, Paul. Thank you, Deb. I'll try to pay attention more, listen to you better here.
We don't get paid for that emotion.
There is a resolution on the floor, and if you're ready, Marsha.
Tyler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Herman? Rose?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving on to H, mayoral proclamation. I had the opportunity, this kind of went ahead on my own here. Good instincts. Well, yeah. After a meeting, it was like a couple months ago, I had this ask for, to do this proclamation for the Thursday celebration of the foundation, so I put together what you saw, and that's what I proclaimed, and that's what Nathan and I, KCRG and everybody else caught that day, so. So after the fact, mayoral proclamation, and since this has already happened, I don't think I'm gonna read the whole thing into public record, but you got a copy, it is what it is, and it's funny, Fred told a joke that day. He had a joke of the day that he shared with everybody, but there were some other interesting, some things going on at that time. It was a very humorous warning, and very good deal for Fred. Motion for approval. Got a second list of claims from Marsha this afternoon. Questions of anybody about those amended claims, or are we ready for a motion?
I'm just curious, the, it's just the lack of my knowledge. There's a, where'd it go? Apologize, I had it here. It's the maintenance, vehicle maintenance with, gosh, Lynch?
Lynch?
No, the auto parts store.
Parts? Parts?
Yes. What kind of maintenance do they do?
Well, it's mainly parts for.
Yeah, it just comes out of that category.
For vehicle maintenance.
Okay.
Vehicle maintenance is the, the category name.
Okay.
But they're not doing a lot of changes.
No, as far as I can give it, it's.
So then our staff's doing the yearbook, right?
Yes, mostly.
Thank you. I was confused, and that's all I need.
Yeah.
With that, I would move approval of the claims that's presented.
Roll call. Second?
I'll second.
Greg. Motion for, approve the claims list. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item for approval is move the date of the next meeting through President's Day. Pretty explanatory, and.
And I don't really want to put you on the spot, but I did kind of put this in that resolution we talked about, for it, we, the Palisades, the Davis Park. One of those scheduled to be heard on the 22nd. So. Well, we discussed it at the last meeting, because I said, when we adopted the resolution at the previous meeting, that we pointed out that it was.
Smooth, that's been very smooth. I would move that we change, move the regular city council meeting from Monday, February 20th, 2023, to 2/22/2023.
Before we second that, are we sure we're gonna have a forum? Steph just said she may be out of town. There are some people who are gonna have Ash Wednesday services that might, well, at the same time. Particularly, we second, then we'll discuss. Call it, guys.
I, I can, I'll second it, but it's.
So it is possible, we have talked before about shifting the time a little bit.
You have the ability to do what you would like. You do not have to keep it on that Wednesday. The only thing that it probably does do is, I would probably hold the bid until the following date, and just inform the contractor. It's not, I, I want everybody to understand that it's not a big deal, because those two bids that we are currently looking to receive have hard, hard start and hard finish dates. So it's not as if, if you don't have that meeting, that they're gonna put them to a loop behind, it's just a matter of going through the process. So you can move it to whatever date you want. I just simply put it in that resolution, we talked about that last week in January, which was almost due.
Do we need three to four?
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
You're okay, Deb?
Okay.
Okay. We've got the.
Okay.
We think we're okay with four. There is a motion still on the floor for that Wednesday, as I called, recommended.
Yep.
So if we are ready to vote on that, then, all favor of that motion of that Wednesday, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm assuming it's the same regular time, right?
Sure.
Good. J3, special consideration for assistant city administrator appointment, council action as needed.
So I have struck gold with this meeting. I went from being extremely short staff to very happy about where I'm at today. So I have two appointments tonight. Both individuals are here. The first would be Lori Warren, is who I am recommending the council appoint as my assistant city administrator. She's got a wealth of knowledge coming from the private engineering sector, and I think we have mutual interest on projects and where we see the future of offering and going, and have some really faith that the city would be a big hand out of town and be in charge. Two things, and I'll talk about salary requirements at this, but I'm recommending the appointment at $90,000, which is about halfway between the salary range, it's supposed to be about $95,000. For both individuals, I am also recommending because they come with significant amount of previous experience, that they be given a bank of 120 hours of PTO, so they do not lose vacation, and then they accrue a 20 an hour. Keep in mind, our PTO policy has a strict payout, so even though we can accumulate the $400, based upon you're actually here to service with Mount Vernon, you only get paid out of, at most, about half of that. So we have some checks and balances to make sure we don't get too crazy, but where both of these individuals are at in their career, going back too far would be a setback, and it's like a minor thing.
Agreed.
For the competitiveness of getting involved.
Any questions, Chris?
I mean.
This one?
I move approval of appointing Lori Warren to the role as assistant city administrator with the benefits presented.
Seven.
Big step. Moving second to move forward, if I'm a step of, what city administrator position Lori Warren?
Assistant city.
Assistant city.
I don't like Chris's job, you know, but still. Well, it was close. You're slipping, you're ill. I quit.
I was only laughing because you made me promise that when I was going through the interview process, that I had no plans of going anywhere. She's not gonna make that particular change, if I did.
You know the motion? This is not a roll call vote, but all favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Deb. Thank you. Motion carries.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Lori.
Moving on to J4, public hearing date.
Technically, she's on number eight.
Oh, we got a.
But technically, J4, then. Any motion for approval for the public hearing? For the budget? J4, I know.
I would move approval of setting the public hearing date as required.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second that. First, we're gonna be in March. Motion on the floor to approve the next hearing date from March 6th, with opposed budgets. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And J5, special consideration for purchasing lockers for the police department renovations.
As with all renovation projects, it seems like equipping the locations is going to be the largest expense, but again, these were not part of the bid intentionally. We had very. had very specific requirements for most of the equipment, and wanted to make sure that that, I think it lost the translation, uh, did say, so Chief Shannon has provided his explanation, the amount is forty-two thousand, twenty dollars and seventy-five cents, that's to equip both the women and the locker room and the new construction.
It includes specialized equipment like evidence and gun lockers to.
Correct.
Questions of chief for Chris, otherwise I'll entertain motion.
Seven.
Second, second plan, yeah. The motion on the floor to approve the purchase of lockers for the police department's renovations, ready to vote on that, all okay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. J six, discussion consideration of police officer contract by Appleton County, Chief Shannon.
So you should have received some emails from me today, hopefully trying to explain it, what we are going to be doing, we have extended a preliminary offer of employment to an individual who's currently attending Iowa Law Enforcement Academy for the Lynn County Sheriff's Office. He was hired by them in October, he has a desire to leave there and come here mid-cycle of the academy, if we do this properly, we can keep him in the academy and just keep him rolling, he'll just march first, which, actually, February twenty-seventh, will switch from being a county employee to being a Mount Vernon Lisbon employee at that location. I've worked with the sheriff's office to identify what his costs are for his contract, much like we did when Emily left and Waqee reimbursed the city for the contract, the county's portion of that is just over, just under twenty-one thousand, the contract that we'll be placing him under is about approximately thirty-four thousand, once he's finished with the academy, that'll be all expenses related to that, we'll put him under a four-year contract here on that thirty-four thousand number to protect our investment as well, so, we're excited about the hire, he's, he's very excited about coming, I think he's gonna be a great addition, and I can't wait for you guys to meet him.
And that'll make your department whole, then?
Hopefully, yes, for a little while, we'll keep it that way.
Eldon now, aren't we, a real state.
I'm interviewing today.
Pressure here, Eldon. Any further questions, chief?
I would move approval of the police officer contract buyout as presented.
Paul, I'll second that, March, great. Motion on the floor to approve this contract buyout, new police officer, we're all ready to vote, all okay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. J seven, discussion consideration of major park quarry con treatment quote, price that actually went down.
It did, and my expectation with the suppliers is that it will go down again next year, but the introduction of the three divisors, keeping water moving, is working, we've had more and more individuals out there on the dock fishing, and so far, it seems to be.
Having a process that does that finally is worth it, that price went down, yeah. Questions of Chris, or may I bring you in that?
I would just like to say that after all these years, it's nice to see that that asset to our community is being improved, and I appreciate it being brought forward in the first place, and happy to support it with the motion to approve the continuation of the major park quarry restoration project.
Thanks for your motion, Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second. We're ready to vote on J seven, we're ready to vote on the quarry con treatment quote, all okay with that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. J eight, now we're to discussion consideration of city planner appointments.
So I gave Lee Bradberry the week of the, to consider the position and the reason that you see her at number eight and not number three, I didn't want to jinx myself, so I was almost a great caller this morning to find out that she had agreed, so this hire same thing with the PTO, we would be hired at fifty-two thousand, with the caveat that whether or not we do it at six months, or split it into two and six months in a year, the goal would be to get her to fifty-five, fifty-six thousand at the end of the first year. She comes with a wealth of knowledge from Hyatt City, almost twenty years, took a little time off and is looking to come back, I'm super excited to have her as well, so staff is whole, the only person that might be as excited as I am is Marsha. So, yeah, we will get these individuals on board, they're weedy faces, but city help, and I'm excited about the future, and, you know, if the state will use our, leave our funding alone, we might be able to accomplish quite a bit, so.
Well, I move to approve the appointment of Lee Bradberry as the city, new city planner for the city of Mount Vernon, with all the benefits that you've described. Craig, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving second to approve Lee Bradberry for city planner appointment, ready to vote on that, all okay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, going to discussion, item CIP budget, this the placeholders that you can add, as long as you already referenced.
I will tell you from a, from a budget perspective, that I, you know, the CIP that you've seen will stay in place, whether or not the projects we're, is really kind of depending on what, what will come out of this budget session, actually this budget session. My expectation at this point is we have a number of projects that are currently in the books, we have the website and a few other projects that we need to close out as well, so I do believe that we will be busy this next year with closing out existing projects, and that those that are already planned are, and then conservatively trying to hang on to some dollars if possible. We do have specific pots of money, local option sales tax, that have trails, for instance, we could look at a trail project at any time throughout the year, depending on what those costs would be, so there are, there are places where we could start some projects that have funding mechanisms aren't in place that would be affected by changes that are being made at the lift, such as, I can tell you guys that right now, property tax, sales tax, and valuation, they're all.
Just, I don't have to remind anybody here that we have about forty citizens, maybe more, that are actively working to try to find childcare solutions, and seed money keeps coming up in these meetings, and so just know that it's gonna happen at some point as well.
And we have a pool discussion, I mean, there are a lot of large projects that have yet to get off the ground, one that I've danced around a lot, just because I know the immense size of the project will be the downtown.
The off-street skate.
And the resurfacing of first, basically down to the first unit.
Thank you for your report. Mayor's report, I probably just mentioned two things, I did catch the community leaders' breakfast last Thursday at Cornell, and I did give people the heads up about sixteen pennies in tax, that water barriers are coming, if not this summer, the next summer, or maybe over two summers or whatever here, and pointed out one of the details in Chris's progress report, that our increased valuation, the increased value of the city of Mount Vernon went up thirty-two percent, and that does not count the, what the school district, what our other partners in the community have done, the school district with the performing arts center and working on their athletic facility, and doesn't count what Cornell has done with Russell Science Center and a new dormitory in a few years supposedly, so that's a lot of increased valuation in the city of Mount Vernon, between all those partners, so that was what I had there, and it was a very interesting underbody, the end of council reports, Craig Lewis to the Childcare Solutions Group.
We all got an invite from Marie DeBries for a water discussion.
Last Saturday.
Saturday of the month, I think?
Twenty-fifth, ten eleven-thirty at the LBC.
Yep.
By Laura Kraus. Any other reports? Any other business that has come before this council, otherwise we are adjourned, thank you everybody.